I'm going to call the Crook County Board of County Commissioner meeting to order. It is Wednesday, December tenth to twenty twenty-five at nine A M. Commissioner Barney will be present on Zoom and Commissioner Crawford and I are present in the room. Is there any public comment? I see no public present in the meeting here. Is there any public comment online? If you do have public comments, please write or type into the chat box so that we can recognize you. Seeing none, we will move on. So the first item for discussion is a treasurer's report for November twenty twenty-five. And we have Christina Heron, our finance director, to report.
She's on Zoom as well.
There Christina?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can Christina, go ahead, please.
Good morning, thank you. So here is our November thirtieth treasurer's report and you'll see some increase in the numbers after tax season in November. We have an increase of around nine million dollars over our October numbers. You'll see some increases in our L G I P county account as well as our Zion's core investments. So we have a goal to keep around thirty million dollars in our liquidity, which is our L G I P county account. So with the help of our portfolio advisors, governmental portfolio advisors that help us with our investments, we decided to invest around five million dollars and those are laddered out with maturities every month according to our cash flow. So we're able to make a little bit of money on those extra dollars that we don't need immediately. So you'll see as we go down into our general ledger that all of those accounts foot to our cash in the bank, except for that variance that is detailed as the deposits in transit and some tax payments. And then we go down into our allocation by fund and you can see how all of those funds are allocated across the funds in the county. And then you can see that that foots to our pooled cash. And then we go down into how our investments are split up. These are governed by our investment policy, which is also has certain requirements under O R S that we can only invest in certain investments and have minimal risk in our portfolio. So you can see we have an unrealized gain or loss on our investments. And just a reminder that we do typically hold investments to maturity. So that gain or loss is normally minimized to get that lower risk and more predictable returns by holding things to maturity. And then at the end, unfortunately, everybody's noticed, interest rates are coming down. So you'll see some changes in interest rates in both our savings account at First Interstate as well as our local government investment pool. And so if there's any questions, happy to answer questions.
Yeah, our interest rates are kind of dismal.
Yeah, and that was part of the other reason for making sure we get some rates locked in with our investments that we can take advantage of some higher rates before rates continue to go down as is anticipated in the next few months.
You might be the only person in the country unhappy about that.
If you have investments, you are unhappy about that. So is there any questions in the room here for Christina? Seeing none, if they are there any questions from the public or the screen? If you would put in the chat for us, please, if you have a question. Okay, seeing no questions, we will move on to our second thing in the agenda, which is the calendar for year for twenty twenty-two budget process. And we have Jamie Berger here, budget manager.
So first of all, I can just say it's impossible that it's already December and we're already talking about the fiscal twenty-seven budgets. What you have in your pockets and thank you Brianna getting on the screen is something that should look familiar now. We've kept this similar format for several years now. But here's what Will and I are proposing for our budget process this year. It's almost the same as last year, just roll forward for the twenty twenty-six calendar dates. Highlights would be goal setting in January, similar to last year, kicking off departments with their kind of training and materials at the end of January so that they have all of February to work on personnel requests and their own budget requests, getting a first view of the fiber forecast during February. March, the budget team of Will, Christina and I would be meeting one-on-one with departments to kind of work through those elements that have been put together and then start pulling together a document that gets reviewed in April. And then suddenly we're meeting in May. So budget being adopted in June so that we can legally open our doors on July one. So I don't know if you have any questions or any thoughts about the process. I was hoping we could discuss it today so that it can be on the consent agenda next week at your regular meeting and become our official calendar for the season.
One of the things that I like about this is you have who's involved so that we know exactly, you know, what you're doing, when Will's coming in, when the department has you coming in. I think that's done very, very well. Jamie, I think you did a very good job. Will, do you want to say something because you were also on the requestor thing here? I didn't present you.
No, I appreciate Jamie putting the calendar together. I think it looks like a good schedule. Should look somewhat familiar. So, yeah, excited to kick off the budget process.
Wow, probably only you and Jamie, but that's okay.
It's quite possible.
Seth, do you have any questions at all?
No, I'm just checking over again. We don't have anything in February, do we?
No, not as far as us. I already checked that yesterday because we're going to be going to the N A C O conference the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. So we'll be gone. But I looked already and that's why I said, I really like the way you did this because now I can look and say, I'm totally okay. I don't have to ask you for a change.
Perfect. And then I did give some of these dates to, I checked them with Brianna preemptively before we brought it to this meeting to double check your availability on some of those like key dates where we were taking major time. So as far as I know, your calendars are booked for the budget process. And then our goal for our main budget committee meeting is the all-day, you know, longer haul. Try to get the whole thing, all the presentations and all decisions made in a single day. So that is our goal weekend.
That's in June.
That'll be in May with the budget committee, all the citizen members and the commissioners meeting. So unless you feel differently or right now the schedule says the week of May eleventh, but we are hoping to do it all one and done in a single day. Again, like last year.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
Are there any questions from the people that are on Zoom? Again, type in the chat box. Seeing none, thank you very much, Jamie. We'll move on to easement for Parks and Recreation Department irrigation water line on county property. And we have Brian Labelle, who is going to present.
Good morning, commissioners. Brian Labelle, Assistant County Counsel. Some time ago, Parks and Rec Department had installed a six-inch irrigation water line that runs from the Crooked River Pump House and across the road to the Kennedy property, right? And then on up to the pedestrian bridge, right? That crosses the canal. So the, this map here shows the water line is depicted by that aqua blue line that runs across the road, across the Kennedy property, then up to the canal bridge. When I was speaking with Mr. Waring about the termination of the ease of their termination of their lease of the Kennedy property, he had expressed interest in getting an easement for that water line since they no longer be leasing that property. And so I'm putting this before the commissioners to get your consideration of, yeah, thoughts on a potential easement for Parks and Rec on a six-inch water line that's underneath the Kennedy property.
Is that, does that water line go to the dog park? Is that it or no, I'm wrong on that?
Commissioner goes to the RV park.
Oh, goes to the RV, okay.
Keeps going up across the water canal to the RV.
Okay, okay, gotcha. I was turned around.
Yes, I'm still turned around. On the top right, we're looking at the water treatment facility.
That's correct. That's where the box.
Okay, and which is the actual line?
The aqua blue.
Which goes around and that's the one that, so it goes. I kind of do agree with you. I'm a little turned around. So where, where are the, are the fairgrounds on the left?
The fairgrounds are to the north.
Oh, so the fairgrounds aren't even depicted?
No, the canal is running across the tops. Yeah. That's correct, northeast.
Where Christine Heron is.
That's your fairgrounds, but basically that is going into the RV park. So I have a naive question here. Because the RV park is owned by the county and we are in agreement with Parks and Rec, why would they need an easement if the pipeline is in our property? We own the property. What would, what would be the necessity for them to even have an easement?
I suspect is that they would probably want to have access as a district. They would like to have access on county property in order to do the immediate sort of repairs that might be necessary or been to that line.
I think it also goes into their fields on the left.
It has to because I mean, really think about it. If it's on our property and we're partners with them, what is the?
But I'm saying it goes over the road to their property.
Which is the baseball fields and stuff. Yeah, the baseball fields. Yeah, okay, okay. Now, this map is just, is a tough one to me. I looked at that yesterday, okay. Are there any questions online if you would put into the chat box?
Do you foresee that stopping? You know, moving forward with that property anywhere in the future? I mean.
Mr., are you speaking about the Kennedy property and the termination of the lease?
Yeah.
After you, the commission, the board of commissioners had approved the termination, I forwarded along to Mr. Waring for the board's consideration, right? And vote. But my sense is that that was an interest of theirs.
But I was more saying like a future development of the property. If we want a development later, can we just say you can use it? And we'll, you know, guarantee you some type of access to use your water. And so if you have to reroute that, that line on the property.
Could you put that map back up again?
It kind of goes right through the property.
It does, it's kind of a, yeah, I agree with Seth. It's kind of a halfway in the middle of it. And I'm just wondering if there was some way, if we, I anticipate that the Kennedy property is always going to be used for parking, which wouldn't make a difference. But what if we decide to do a structure on there? The way that, if I'm reading it right, the way that aqua line goes, it's.
Just pretty much cuts the whole property right.
Kind of, it's kind of odd they actually did it that way, in my opinion. But do you think that that's something that we need to add in? That we say if at such time this property is developed that we have the right to relocate? We acknowledge the easement, but we can relocate the line? Is that a legality we have to worry about?
I, I, I'm not sure where the board is on that, the Parks and Rec District Board. As far as, I think that they're just wanting to have access. I think there'd be amendable to having an open discussion later on in case they get to develop. They know, I said, can we move this? I think they're just willing to make sure that.
They have water.
They got water.
And the point is, is we would give them water, but the point is, is the way that it goes in through that property is kind of haywire.
Yes.
And I think we need to look into the future and maybe get along really well with them right now. But one day, if we didn't get along with them, I wouldn't want them to be able to hold something up.
And I think that, I think that their feeling was mutual and that's why they wanted the easement.
Yeah.
Right? And it's like, okay.
So can we add something that says we acknowledge the right for you to take water across this property? But if the, like I say, that we can change the location at any time?
I, I, I think that they probably want to make sure that the county and the district were in agreement as far as the relocation of that.
Which is, is fine, but it's just that we don't have to set that in stone. That's what I'm.
I think that, you know, to have that put into, in some sort of an agreement that allows for the easement. But then that in later on, that, you know, it could be subject to review in the event that the property gets.
Okay, can we, and so instead of putting this on consent agenda, can we add that in?
Absolutely.
And it may have to go, I may have to go back to them and that's fine. But I don't think this is a time pressure or sensitive issue.
Commissioner, I'm just bringing to your attention.
Yeah.
And nothing to really, you know, for the immediate, you know, agenda, agenda in the next couple of meetings, but it's more of this and that awareness and give your sense.
So can I ask, is the, is the board, the Parks and Rec Board, are they going to prepare a proposed easement document?
So I, I don't know that. They just posed the question that.
Okay, so there is no actual, okay. So, okay, that answers a big question.
There's not, it's just that they just expressed interest. Can we get an easement on this? I'm like, well, I can't do that, I mean.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable giving them an easement, but I think we should make it in in our favor that we can, I don't think we should even have to have their approval. We just have to provide them water and that we get to decide if it doesn't fit in our plans, that we can move it as long as they still have access to water.
Yes. They have not signed the termination of, of the lease.
When is, when is the lease terminated?
It goes out to twenty forty-five.
No, no, she's saying, when do we assume that they'll sign the lease?
I think, and so that, that, that lease can be terminated by mutual agreement. I think that they are interested.
So we would like to move with the termination, but we want to provide them the ability to have the water, but not in a set through the middle of the property. If that's kind of my, that's what.
I think the question I'm asking is, is there a legal way to say that? That protects the county from future development? How, you know, rare it could be, but still allows them to have water.
I think something could be fashioned to allow that. I think they are wanting to protect their interest in that water line and they will probably, and this is just my sense, I don't have anything concrete in that they won't sign the termination of lease until they, you know, their, their comfort level on this water line is up. So.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but it sounds like a revocable license might make more sense than an easement, especially we're trying to retain some rights. If it's an easement and they have the dominant estate and we are, our hands are tied a little bit as far as moving it. So something revocable license might work out for everybody.
Does revocable license ensure them another easement?
We draft it such that that would not be revoked unless they had an alternative means to get water.
But it would still be our.
Yeah, we would just retain more control that way.
Yeah, so we could revoke it as long as we gave them another access to water of our choosing.
Depending on how it's drafted, but if it's an easement, it gets difficult because us trying to answer it or change locations.
Well, so let's say that the property passed that property across the street as per se and it's designed to be housing. So now they make some deal with the city and a giant water main goes down there. And then with a revocable license, would that give them the ability that they could just, I mean, it would make sense that they just tap on to this massive water line that's going to this housing. They will the revocable license kind of be able to be the stepping because that is what's going to happen out there.
True. Depends how it's drafted, yeah, always mutual agreement parties can terminate them. Or revocable license, that's what you're saying.
But I think what Suzie's saying is if we said, if you're able to get it, get water and not have a line, not have a line through our property, then you have to choose that other option.
Because that is what that property pass there is going to be, is houses.
Yeah.
And so eventually there is going to be some form of an agreement that's done. And in my opinion, why wouldn't it tap off of that? And then it would tap off to their property. Hey, Brian has a comment. Brian, Brianna has to let you talk.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, I can't chat, I can't seem to chat either as this, um. So I would, yeah, I would like to be able to see that lease agreement, easement agreement before we decided to go further. And I, I agree with what's being said. I think that we can, you know, allow them to have water, but it may have to be, the easement may have, be subject to change depending on how we build or what happens to the property. There may be reasons that it can't be at the same location as it's now. And is this irrigation water or is this domestic water?
It's labeled as an irrigation water line, but I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It says irrigation, or at least that's my thoughts on it because it refers to irrigation. And that's kind of a whole different deal that domestic water. So I, I, I think we need to just kind of study this a little bit before we make any drastic moves. That's all I have, thank you.
I think what Brian's saying is irrigation water and city water are different Suzie?
No, and I agree. I agree, but if that opportunity goes, maybe they will want domestic water on their, you know, who knows? I'm just saying, I just want to, I don't like the position of that water line in the middle of that property. I'm not trying to take water and I agree with what Brian's saying, but there could be an opportunity that they decide to do a clubhouse there or something. How do we know? It was way down the road, there's no houses yet. So I don't want to stop and have a renegotiation. But so I guess this is back on your plates. Well done you.
So I will get back with Mr. Waring, you know, that the county needs to look at this.
But I would just tell him what we're thinking because I think they'll be totally on board. I don't think they care that the line's right through the middle. I think they just need water to the park.
Yeah.
And as long as we guarantee, I would even be up for paying for the, can't be that expensive to put a six-inch water line through a property if you're doing other construction.
No, no, at the time, no.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do it even at the cost of the county. And so they don't, I mean, that, that my guess would be their biggest concern.
Yeah.
And Brian, what do you think about the cost on that? You'd have a better idea.
Well, it's not going to be cheap, but, but it's due a point. And, you know, we need to participate in Parks and Rec and things, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I just don't want anything in writing that just says this easement is not changeable. And, and then the whole development of things has to change because of this one six-inch irrigation water.
So, yeah, I would just go back to him and say they're concerned about the location, not today, but for the future. And if we can work something out where we can change that location if we need to, as long as they're still able to get water, I think they would be very amenable to that.
And that the county is very much in support of them, you know, maintaining that water.
Yeah.
Right?
I can't see them having a problem with that and I think that's a very reasonable request.
And that way it was like, you know, those will be, you know, they'll take a little time, right? To, to, to develop that. What I want to try and make sure is that doesn't hold out the termination of lease. Because, right, we're trying to get things cleaned up and out. And so as long as that we can maybe de-tax that a little bit.
Yeah.
Right? And.
I'm happy to call and I'll just tell them what we're thinking and see if that, if you did that.
And I, I think you're very right that we maybe make it to two distinct things. Termination is one of the things, that's a done deal. And then we're just looking out for the future because we have no idea what's happening there. And Brian, do you agree with all of that? You can just put a thumbs up if you don't want to talk.
I, I, I agree, I agree with that. And it is, you know, I, I don't understand what their system is, but if it's a main line, then it's going to go to some distribution. So however it gets to that distribution point, it doesn't make any difference as long as it gets there. Or is that main line also used periodically for lateral lines or things like that? So it would be nice to just have some more information about it and talk with him. It's easy to work something out.
One thing to keep in mind is that the water line is in there already.
Yes, and we're not trying to uproot it or anything. We're just saying in the event.
I understand. But if, if there was any sort of doubt as to whether this is a new easement or something to be constructed, or if there's just an easement to reflect what's already in the ground, it's the latter.
Okay, all righty, are there any more comments from the people on Zoom or in the room here? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next, which is our Public Health Modernization Draft Plan Overview with Katie Plum here and Stephanie O'Neil.
Yes, good morning. I'm going to let Stephanie run with this and I am here for working answering questions or provide context. All right. Good morning, commissioners and everyone else. Thank you for giving us a few minutes today to discuss this draft modernization implementation plan for Crook County Health and Human Services. It is due at the end of this month and still being worked on daily. So please excuse the complete drafty nature of this plan. It, it is intended to outline the capabilities and programs that form the foundation of our public health system. And it ties directly to the core services that we provide every day and that we've presented on to y'all in the past. So examples are disease prevention, health promotion, emergency response, environmental health and community partnership work. One of the most important things to know about the plan is that it's designed to be long-term and adaptable. So as we all know, public health always evolves and needs to evolve. And this plan gives us a structured path forward while still allowing us to adjust as our community, our capacity and the resources change. We intend for it to be a living guide that we review and refresh regularly so that it continues to reflect priorities, progress and emerging needs. So today we're looking for your feedback on the draft, whether the direction aligns with your expectations for county public health, whether anything needs clarification and whether there are areas that you'd like more detail or discussion. Your input is essential and we, as we finalize this plan, I'm prepared to move into the implementation phase of it.
So I have a question. So you're doing this Bible, I'm just going to call it like the Bible of public health in Crook County.
Sure.
And so then when we adopt it, which I'm assuming we need to adopt it, it goes to Oregon Health Authority. And then as we, do we look at it yearly and reassess? You know, like, like I know one of your things in here is staff as well. We don't have the staff, but now let's say we do and then we, so we, we can change this. It's kind of the Bible, but it's changeable on a yearly review or is it a five-year review? How does that kind of work?
Our intention is for it to be a living document and be updated annually. We would like specifically with the tables in there to reassess our numbers and our percentages of F T E, our need. Because need within those capabilities and programs shifts as the needs in the community shifts. So it will be updated on a, on a very regular basis.
Yeah. Okay, I, I'll say this, you put a lot of work into this document. I said that before the meeting and I was, I read it and I was very impressed. I'm impressed by both of you because there wasn't a template and you wrote this out. And I want to thank you for your hard work and all of that. And like I said, so is this something that we need to adopt today because this is still a draft? How do we as commissioners, well, first of all, do you have any questions, Seth? And then Brian, do you have any questions? You just leave Brian unmuted. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, um, so how do we approach this?
I can speak to the um adoption piece. The O A R does not require adoption, although we would love it. I think it formalizes it uh a bit more. Um, so the language in the O A R is that we are consulting regularly, getting input and feedback from you all. Um, we're, we have to submit it at the end of December, so it's due December thirty first. If we adopt it by then, I think that would be awesome. If if you all would like to put your stamp of approval on it, I think that would be powerful. And um, we could, but we're not on a massive time crunch, like we don't have to have it uh. Um, approved or adopted before we submit to Oregon Health Authority.
I also would add to that, that um I would feel uncomfortable adopting it right now because it's.
Still a draft.
Okay. And it's not complete.
And we'll get feedback from Oregon Health Authority. Um, and so maybe after they say, like, you checked all the boxes, we included the uh. The requirements that they, that O H A will look to make sure we're meeting, and so maybe after they've, that he met all the requirements. And we could.
Bring it back and we will.
Okay, yeah, I would love that. Okay.
I think we were ju- um, today we're really just uh looking to see if there's any areas. Uh, that you would like more detail or um. Any. Additional information or anything that you feel uh needs to be better aligned with. County public health.
I think you have uh done, like you say, a very good job and I wish I was smart enough to even give you another topic, but I maybe not. But I think you've covered everything I can, I would think that we want to cover. But you said, what is your opinion?
Great job.
Okay, and Brian, do you have any? Do you like the direction we're going?
Yes, no, it's, it's all good. Thank you. Good job.
Well, the nice thing is that this isn't shifting our direction at all. We aligned it with our perspectives. We, we crosswalked really what we're already doing. It. This allows us the opportunity to vision out. This is um. Basically also our strategic plan, so. Um, it isn't necessarily anything new, but it it formalizes the process for going forward.
Okay. Alrighty, well, thank you, thank you again for all your hard work and Stephanie, I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on, we have Katie for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven I G A for the financing. Of local public health services in Crook County Agreement, one eight five eight oh seven dash four corrected. So Katie, would you like to cover that?
So we covered Amendment Four. Um, we actually signed it last week and. Uh, O H A had caught an error in uh their language in November. The state uh removed quite a bit of the responsibility, all of the oversight and quite a bit of the local responsibility for. Um, very small water systems. And they pulled that language out of the majority of that contract for, they missed a line. And so they corrected it with the edit, removing the very small water systems from line five. And that's the only change, but a a change enough. There's no financial change in the agreement. Eric reviewed and um does not find it to be substantive, so.
So this is kind of exactly what you're talking about, about the the document we talked about before. We send it to O H A, we look at what they come back, we alter and then we go ahead.
Yeah, with these amendments, uh, they actually altered. Uh, they found, they caught their error. Um.
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, so is this something because there was a motion made? Is this something Eric that we need to reapprove today? Or how do we move forward with this?
Yeah, so part of the reason I thought it would be helpful to have this in front of you guys is. The prior version was approved at a Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, was sent off to Cheryl's office to record the uh records of the Board of Commissioners. Um, and if there should ever be a question of why is it that the document and clerk's records and the document. And the Health Department records aren't the same, where did that error come from? I thought there would um would benefit from having some sort of discussion in the minutes from that. Um, I, the the changes, as Katie mentioned, I think are are functionally modest. Um, so what I might just suggest is a motion to delegate authority to um someone, maybe Katie, maybe Will, maybe one of the Commissioners. Um, to sign the updated version and we'll just get it out the door.
Okay, who Katie on here? I didn't see where it was really a Commissioner. I saw where it was more you and Simon, but did I miss that part? I I mean, what I'm looking at is it's Katie, but.
There, since, I think since you all approved the.
I'm not seeing.
Um, the fiscal changes in that last contract. Um, I would be approving in this one, the language change. Eric, is that seen?
Yeah, I think that's fair and and we will have in the minutes this discussion, so that will count. Or if anyone wonders, wants to know why there are differences between these two documents. And why Katie is signing, now we can look at.
Yeah, because it looks to me like it's Katie that would be signing because that's.
That form, um, I say that I received it typically and then if it's over my dollar amount. To accept. Um, then it goes to Will or you all as authorized.
Okay, is it over the dollar amount for Katie?
For this change, I don't think that the change itself, what you previously proved, is over that dollar value. So if Katie's willing to be the person to put her John Hancock on here, I think that's fine. You can just make a motion to delegate authority to Katie Plum to sign.
Do you have any questions, Brian?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to authorize Katie to sign.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Barney, aye.
Irma, aye. Okay, alrighty. Thank you. Okay, so now on our agenda, we have opting out of New Eastern Oregon Solar Siding Rules. And we have John Isler, Community Development Director.
Isn't it a lot of syllables? Uh, good morning Commissioners. Uh, so what I have in front of you is uh just a draft that we can then bring forth in a regular meeting. Uh, I think we probably discussed this before, both Will and I were part of the rack on this, but uh D L C D has implemented new. Siding rules for local takes in eastern Polish states. Uh, it's basically. Um. Kind of complicated to explain. So the way they created it, there are three paths that a local government can take. They can um do nothing, which um. Opens them up to these new set of rules in section forty four of the general um ag section, the D L C D rules. The county can uh do what's called opting out, which preserves the current set of rules that these things are applied against. And then there is, um, you can create your own program under Division twenty three, which is a regular one for uh goal five updates and um. The rules go into effect January one of this year, of this next year. So if we do nothing, then we will be. Basically, an applicant can apply into these new rules and we have to process it under those rules. Um, I brought this opt out here before you. It's, it's, it's not a permanent opt out. Uh, we can undo the opt out anytime we want. Uh, as I said here in the order itself, which is pretty simple. We um. We're hoping to update our goal five inventory and uh do our own program through these new rules. Uh, reliant on a grant and I am happy to announce that we did uh get selected for that D L C D grant yesterday, late in the days.
Very good.
It's great news, very exciting. Uh, we're gonna get new maps. Um, and we can also go through this process, which is, I think it's really exciting. Um. It's gonna involve a lot of community input. Uh, the way the rules are set up, um. Boilerplate is basically there are these significant solar resource areas that are, uh, they just basically look at a map and anything within ten miles of transmission. Um, fairly level ground, fairly good solar resource, not in sage grass, not in a few other kind of sensitive things are included in this map. Um, and it 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 opens the possibility that there can be a project applied for here that goes into, I think, nineteen hundred and twenty acres. Uh, and so my idea is we would opt out because we just, um. We're already, these rules are new, they're complicated. If you remember, we were one of the uh guinea pigs on the new statutes for solar setting. Um, and we ended up getting appealed on interpretation issue and that took a lot of staff time. Um, you know, they turned out great for us, but uh I don't wanna expend those resources again when we can kind of just pause and step back and say. We're gonna do our own program, take a close look at these rules and uh when we get it put in place, um, I think it will work for the county and for the developers. And citizens and for everybody. Uh, some of the exciting things with these new rules are there are um agricultural mitigation and community benefits mitigation programs. And if we go on our own path. The rules leave us a lot of discretion on how we develop those and what those mean, um, and where those benefits go. So. Um, long-winded way of saying, I'm I'm excited about the grant. I'm excited about us uh going down our path to to create our own program. Uh, this opt out is basically calls a timeout, uh while we get a chance to look at um. Get our own program, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Seth, do you have any questions? Brian, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I agree with John. I think that that. Crook County needs to have the opportunity to speak up for itself, make its own decisions. Or be part of that process, so I totally am bored with with the with the plan. Thank you.
Is there anyone that's uh on chat that would like to comment?
Or just raise your hand.
Or just raise your hand so we know. Seeing none, I totally agree with Brian. I think we're a special place and I'd like to see us do our own. Destiny and rules, and I think having a timeout is is very appropriate for us at this time. So if uh there's no more discussion, if someone would like to make a motion.
Of course, I don't, I don't think there's a motion yet, so I plan to bring this to the meeting next week.
Okay, and we're gonna discuss it at the meeting, so this wouldn't be a consented agenda item.
It could be consent, but I have no problem if public wants to um chime in on this, it can be discussed.
And that's probably very good.
And so Brianna, quick note, um, I might need to make one quick change on this, just that we were, this thing says we're currently seeking grant funding, so.
Now, we're gonna say we have the money, which is, and and that is very good news. Thank you very much for working for that and getting that, John.
Well, I think historically we've had some of the most thoughtful, impressive solar. Uh, processes in the state.
Yeah.
They even took our processes in the past and put them up for statewide use. So I I think we've shown that we know how to work as a community and find the right way to build.
I plan on being, um, it's outside the box and forthcoming as I can on this program as well, so I'll get it. I'm really excited about it, but uh, so. Yeah, we'll have this next week and we can discuss it as well.
Okay, perfect. Alrighty, well then it looks like John has the uh. Has the next agenda, agenda item, which is Community Development Monthly Update.
Yep, up to you again. Uh, Randy, you may be showing up here in a minute, so I'm going to start with um the planning and and the rest of it. And see if he shows up and I'll come back to Billy at the end. Uh. This is our update for the month of October. Um. Coming back to Billy, so I'm jumping to the middle of the report on planning. So this shows applications for October uh down versus October of last year. Remember, I think our report from. September, the numbers also slowed down a little bit, so it seems like, I don't know if there's something with the economy, but but numbers uh on the planning side have. Um. Definitely slowed down a little bit. We're still up year to date over last year, uh, but there's definitely something going on here. The. Um, quality of applications, we got obviously a very big one. We finally got an In Canyon application in October, so that's gonna be a very big one to process. So it's uh sometimes it's not just the quantity of application we have to deal with. Um. But so we got twenty four, plenty of applications in the month of October, which is thirty eight last year. Uh, some of the big ones we have going on, we have a central organ, then watch appeal of a non-farm decision. That hearing, uh, the final hearing is set for next week on the seventeenth. The staff report is getting put together by Katie right now. We have the Verizon Tower in Powell View. Uh, that's actually next week. Staff report to go out today, so it'll be December seventeenth. The code updates are today. There's a lot of code updates. We are, uh, one of them. We're finally removing the reference to the county court. Not to say Board of Commissioners throughout, which is, I'm gonna be excited. Uh, Transportation Safety Action Plan. Uh, so this one is basically on pause at the moment. We um. Uh, had trouble communicating with our grant representative, especially with the government shutdown and um we need an extension. And so I'm trying to get confirmation from him, um, our representative, that we can get that extension before we expend any more resources towards this. To make sure we can get the extension and get payback. Uh, so TBD on that one. Um, Hagley, that aggregate mine, there he is. Uh. That one, I sent him a complete letter, so I don't know if that's still gonna be on the twenty eighth of January.
Where's that located?
Uh, it's, it's up in Lone Line.
So didn't we have them before, before?
Yeah, and so this is another one.
Now, what do we, what is, what is this additional, I guess?
So this one was actually, uh, they did their complaint amendment a long time ago. I can't remember. I think it was over two thousand, maybe mid nineties. Um, and they had a C U P for it, but they never needed to forward on it, so it expired. And so they're just now, they don't have to do the complaint amendment, they don't do the E C analysis, that's all been done. Uh, this is just the, the condition used permit for it. Um, but like I said, I sent him a complete letter, so I'm waiting for response and so that one.
So when they were before us before. What was that before? I mean, well, they wanted, I guess what it was, was kind of an expansion or they were putting the road up above for fire. What was the difference said between this and that?
It's a different location.
Okay.
But similar.
So over, okay, gotcha.
But different. Different pit. Yeah. Than what they're, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's basically what I like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and then we have our In Canyon, basically, like I said, town is scheduled for February, so we can get that pushed through. Um. Who's any of them we're not mentioning? Uh, Nittle City stuff, they. It's a grocery bandit. Uh, but Zon Lot changed. There's a, they got awarded a grant for their um housing analysis. They are working on their economic opportunity analysis to be adopted next month, hopefully. Uh, new subdivision of Iron Horse. And I don't know what the housing development, removal portion of the city is, but that's all good news if it includes residential. On site, numbers there are also down. Um, only fourteen permits versus twenty three of last year. But again, we're still up pretty significantly year to date, so we'll see if that was a blip. Uh, and then on the code compliance side. It was as busy as always. I opened ten cases in October, we closed five. Um, he's got a long stick. That is my portion. I'm gonna pass it off to Randy over here.
All right, with the later, I'm gonna call. Um. So building, as you guys can see, I mean, as of twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six, I mean, it's one permit off. Um, so again, seeing consistent numbers, um, you can see twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six. All relatively about the same amount of permit numbers, so it kind of shows us that we're kind of in normal activity minus the larger projects. Um, one thing I would note though is that the commercial, the last three. The commercial, the normal commercial, last maybe five, six years has been up. Um, so where normally there's a lot of residential construction, we're seeing a lot more commercial businesses, that type of thing. So there is a little bit uptick in the permit numbers because of the commercial activity. Um, not associated with the larger projects. But thirteen houses, um, forty four commercial permits, hundred and eighteen other residential permits. Uh, twenty eight shop type structures for uh residential. So two hundred and four permits issued for October. Um, still have a hundred and seventy five houses under construction that we're overseeing. Uh, seven hundred and eighty one other type of residential permits that could be anything from an electrical heat pump to a shop. Um, and commercial permits are three hundred and thirty two, so. Um, still averaging over a thousand field inspections a month. Um. I think, and the matters highway apartments are starting to come out of the ground, all those buildings.
Finally, huh?
Finally.
I noticed that when I went uh last week and I drew, I thought, finally, they're starting second.
Yeah, and their framers, they needed something for them to do, so they started, you sell the wall panels out there, it's just to keep them going. They started just site building the wall panel, you know, exterior wall, you know, in sections that they could keep those guys busy and lift them up, shut them down. Um. Then I think we worked through the other apartments. We had some fire blocking, caulking issues um that we worked through with them. They brought in the S T I company, the actual fire caulking reps themselves. We did some trainings with their staff. Our, some of our staff joined in. They actually fired caulking reps themselves. We did some trainings with their staff. Our, some of our staff joined in. Of what's also including some of their other teams in the valley, um due to the way that the fire caulking needed to be done versus the way it was being handled. So that was quite a mitigation. Um and then we got through some of the sound transfer requirements in there that try to admit that I actually ended up having to go to the state to get in the, uh their interpretation as well, and include mine because they aggressively thought that I was in error. Um went to the state and they agreed that sound transmission was required in, in the stairwell walls. So I think we got that accomplished last week. Um just a lot of headaches with a lot of moving parts on some of these projects. So our team has been, been pretty frustrating for some of our staff, or people not reading the plans, or not understanding the plans, or how installed it should be, or some, um some nights our jobs can't hold at times. Um but, you know, everybody's been great to work with and understanding, and we all have different levels of experience and including myself. So each time somebody can level up, I then understand those requirements at different levels sometimes. So, but I know it's been a big tax on our team for the last six weeks. Um but with that, I think that's kind of, we've got, we're trying to work with Empire Solar. Empire Solar is trying to do some seminals, uh because like this it's a hundred and three megawatt, I think, if I'm correct, John. They're trying to apply for some tax, whatever purposes they are. They're wanting to install a couple little parts and pieces of an entire solar field. In case you guys hear anything, we've kept John Price um on our second round of seminals with that team. Um they want to, I guess, the easiest way I explain to them is you wanted to build a house, but you're just gonna apply to put a bathroom fan in. You know, you can't, we need the plants to build a whole entire house in order, and then you can elect what you want to install. Like, they want to go install like an inverter pad, and then I want to put in like three hundred feet of cable in the ground. It's whatever reason to vest their deal for whatever their purpose is, they have just the little requirements they gotta meet. Our team and our department for seminals needs, we've helped them try to at least carve it down into a phase, said, given us a full design of like a hundred and three megawatts. Um you know, you can do it in phases, but they chose to do like a twenty megawatt phase, but it's not a complete design set. So um if you hear anything there, we're just asking for a complete set of a phase that we could permit, and that they could elect to choose what portions of a solar field they want to install for their purposes only. That's not on us to determine what they install, as long as they have a legal permit, but we have to at least require the full design. It's getting very frustrating trying to get to that behalf at this point. Um a lot more conversations, I think, today with that, with their team. But in case you guys hear anything on that, that's kind of swing along there.
But the expiration of I R X tax, tax credits for renewables, they're all scrambling to get uh begin construction under the deadline. So that's, we're kind of scrambling. Um okay. I forgot to mention, want to mention, uh Randy and Chris are Sanatarian, and who was our co-compliance officer, we're all gonna be presenting tonight county college from six to eight. Um and so pretty exciting, I should thank him for the work he put in.
Okay, thank you. Will, I'm sorry to get to hear that. Yeah. Do you have any questions? And is anyone up on the screen, or Brian, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry it was later.
That's okay, we'll forgive you only one time. Okay.
Better than never.
Better than never. There you go. That's well said, Seth. Okay, so now we have the manager report.
Thank you. Um couple things this morning. Uh John stole my thunder a little bit. I wanted to thank um the folks at Community Development for uh their work in um getting ready for county college, and as well as Kelly at the airport. Um looking forward to their presentations uh this evening, as what is this session five?
So.
So, um so um thanks in advance for all your work on that. Uh also wanted to note, uh for any staff listening in, um if you haven't seen the notices from H R, they're hosting an open house um starting at eleven this morning, so.
I think they changed the time to nine.
Oh.
I saw that one.
I still have it on my calendar at eleven, but um.
It'd be nice if we could just head over after this.
Please swing by and say hi, and thank you to H R for hosting that.
You need a Christmas picture first. Well, when you run away. Okay. Sorry, Brian.
No, I just want to thank H R for hosting that.
Through, we'll talk about it.
I'm uh I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Okay. Brian, do you want to do your commissioner update first?
I don't really believe I have anything to say.
Okay. How about Seth?
Uh yeah, I'm really excited to announce that the uh S R S got refunded for three years last night. Uh we're still waiting for the president to sign it, but I feel very confident that he will. Uh I know Suzie uh traveled back to Washington, D C to work on those as well.
I would be very curious to know if Missouri voted for it. I need to, I need to go back and look, because they were so awful to us, but anyway. Sorry, Missouri, but you weren't. Okay.
Yeah, but Suzie and I have traveled back to D C to work on this. This is extremely important to our roads, our county, our schools. Uh I would much prefer we were cutting trees, but until they figure that out, uh I think it's extremely important that they give us dollars to kind of fill the hole that they've made by stopping that. So um hopefully Brianna will have time today to put together a press release talking about that. And I think in that press release, we need to be very, very uh appreciative to Congressman Cliff Benz for pushing this through. I, I talked to his staff consistently about this, and uh they've been working extremely hard with the speaker to find a way to do this. There was uh a lot of things that the that, that they had to navigate with the new system with not having offsets for, for dollars, and they were able to find that. And I think we're truly lucky for them to be pushing for us.
Now, Will asked me today, and I said he needed to defer to you. Do we get back things?
Think, I don't know. I think it may be a year back, this year and next year, but I don't, I don't have that information.
Yeah, and I said I didn't know that. So anyway, well, that's really, really good news. Okay, do you have anything else, Seth?
Um no, just kind of on county college, you know, I, I think it's been really good. Uh I think the people there are learning a lot and uh getting to understand better what we do, and hopefully they're sharing that information with the public.
Has the attendance stayed up, or like the people that are coming, they're still coming? Perfect. Well, you guys must be doing a very good job then.
Well, the department that's are.
Well, um that just shows that's the whole thing.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And Steph, yeah. Okay. My commissioner update is next Wednesday on the seventeenth. I got the date right, uh the day and time at ten forty-five. The fourth grade from Steen's Pillar, I shouldn't say fourth grade. Do you think they're about fourth grade?
I think they are fourth graders.
I think they are fourth grade. From Steen's Pillar is going to come to the front of the old courthouse and carol. Last year, we had a very, we didn't know, we were kind of on a quick thing about it. But the, uh this year, I wanted to advance, tell everyone, they didn't have a big audience last year. So up at ten forty-five, you can walk out. They're darling kids, they're singing Christmas carols. We all need to be in the spirit, so hopefully you can all and your staff can attend. And, and uh you don't get to sing along, but you can hum along, maybe. Okay.
Well, and if the timing works out, it'll be the perfect conclusion to our last regular board meeting of the year.
It would be, so that will be good.
But along those lines, in case we end up with a long agenda, we should prepare for maybe having to take a break um for that.
Yes, that'll be on Commissioner Barney will have to do. But we do, we do have to take a break when the caroling starts, uh Brian. So anyway, and that is really all I need to say. So is there anything else that we need to cover?
Nope, I, I'm wishing to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna go that probably Brian is gonna second that, or I'll just second that, we don't have to ask him to unmute. So the motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Irma, aye. Okay, we're adjourned.